Can you join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which serves its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd remain standing for just a quick moment of silence. We lost two real special people since we've met last. Jim Patton, retired fire chief, passed away in an airplane accident, which was a big surprise. And Phil Mazur, for those of you that have been active with the Chamber of Commerce, Phil was very, very active and did some great things, and we lost him in a battle with cancer. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board, the regular Village Board meeting of August 16th, 2016. Trustee Maher.
Here.
Trustee Grady. Trustee Penito.
Here.
Trustee Vandenberg.
President.
Trustee Youngker.
Here.
Trustee Suggs.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, approval of the minutes of the special village board meeting held on August 2nd, 2016. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. Thank you. It's been moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
One second, I think.
I abstained from the vote for the minutes. I wasn't present.
Oh, let the record so reflect. Thank you. Item number three, approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please do your thing.
Item three, on motion to consider the consent agenda, and this is for our guests, this particular item is read. A, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, August 20th, 2016, on Kinsdale Drive between 1912 and 9144, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. B, consider request from the Muscular Dystrophy Association to conduct a tag day fundraiser on Friday, August 19th, 2016, Friday, September 2nd, 2016, and Friday, September 30th, 2016, at certain intersections in the Village of Tinley Park. C, consider proclaiming September 4th through September 10th as National Payroll Week in hopes we're getting one in the Village of Tinley Park. I think, Brad, this is yours?
Testably, yes.
D, consider proclaiming recognizing September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the Village of Tinley Park. E, consider proclaiming recognizing September 26th through October 2nd, haha, as diaper need awareness week in the Village of Tinley Park. And F, payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $3,486,872.28 as listed on the vendor board approval reports dated August 5th and August 12th, 2016.
Would anybody on the board care to remove any of the items from the agenda? Have any questions?
I'd ask that number 10 be removed. Oh, on the village agenda?
What does the consent agenda?
Oh.
I was going to say, where the hell is 10?
If there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call on consent agenda. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yay.
Trustee Youngker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, consider recognizing Kathy Parker for lifesaving actions on July 17th at the Tinley Park Citizens Police Academy recruitment booth at the Caribbean Block Party. Trustee Vandenberg, do you want to open that one up?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Tinley Park Police Department lifesaving award is presented to Kathy Parker. At the Caribbean Block Party on July 17th, 2016, two Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association members were manning a booth to recruit students for the 2017 Citizens Police Academy class. Alumni member Roy Fornick was enjoying a piece of candy when he began to choke. Fellow alumni member Kathy Parker immediately sensed that Roy was in distress and applied the Heimlich maneuver, which dislodged the piece of candy. Roy Fornick admitted after the incident that he was in trouble, and Kathy saved his life. The Village of Tinley Park Mayor David Seaman and Chief Steve Newbauer would like to recognize the immediate response and lifesaving action of Kathy Parker. This is signed by Mayor David G. Seaman and Chief of Police, Stephen Newbauer.
Kathy, please step up.
Roy, you want to come up, too? Thank you, Lisa.
The certificate of recognition on behalf of the citizens of Tinley Park is awarded to Kathy Parker in recognition for lifesaving action on July 17th, 2016. This act of valor by Kathy Parker saved the life of a fellow alumni member, Ray Fornick, at the 2016 Tinley Park Urban Block Party. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Now we get back down to business. At this point in time, we would like to ask Greg Coon, representing Sickich and Associates, to make a presentation on the village's strategic plan summary report.
Greg.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Seaman, trustees, Mr. Clerk, staff members, and members of the community. I'm glad to be back here again, representing the team that's helped the village throughout the strategic planning process that began last December. And I just want to make a few highlight comments this evening. You received the summary report, and I always like to stress that the report summarizes all your work, including the input that we gained from the community prior to the workshops, and the results of the goals that you developed, and then the prioritization that you provided. In summary, for those of you that were not part of the process, but I think it's important in terms of looking at highlights, strategic planning is a process that's comprised of four basic steps. Initially, scanning, and scanning is a term we use to talk about gathering information, putting your ear to the ground. In the case of the village, we conducted a series of focus group sessions. We had seven sessions. They included representatives from businesses, your civic organizations, high school students, village residents, village employees, and I believe the village sent out over 100 invitations to people that comprised those groups. The results of that data collection effort were provided to the board and to the staff, senior staff members, prior to our workshops in January. And I don't think any of us will forget that evening in January when we gathered, because by the time we finished, Mother Nature had put down a good eight to 10 inches of snow on the ground, and you just don't forget nights like that when you leave late in the evening. So, but we did get together on two evenings in January, and the results of that work are summarized in the report, and we went through a series of exercises, you might remember. We started with a review of the village's mission, and then we did some scanning using the information that was gathered and broke you up into groups. We also asked the board members and village staff to do a visioning exercise and to be able to express and share ideas about the future of the village, et cetera, all working towards the development of goals. And once those goals were developed, they were consolidated and then prepared into a series of ranking sheets, and at the end of that process, the village board members work in looking at each goal that exists within a time and complexity matrix. They developed four sets of goals that, if you look at the draft report, should be around page 21. Your top three goals in each of these four categories emerge, but the detail shows all the other goals that were developed during the process as well. And as we like to say when we work with any organization on developing goals, generally, you know, there aren't too many bad goals that are developed during any of these processes. We looked at both short-term and long-term goals. We looked at complex and routine goals, but the thing is, like all organizations, you can only tackle so many at a time, and it's important for the board to give direction to staff on what to work on first, second, and third. So, I don't want to take the time tonight unless, Mr. Mayor, you would like me to highlight these top three goals in each category, but I would like to share with the board, the staff, and those that are here what the next and final steps are in this process. The next steps are to come back and work with the village manager and the senior staff, your department heads, and the assistants, and develop an action planning document that will provide two things. One, it provides a set of target dates and assignments on who will be responsible for carrying and leading the effort in many of these goals that have been identified. It will establish some target dates, and the other thing, it helps set up a reporting mechanism, so you can have status reports as the staff progresses on working on these various goals. And again, it's important to keep in mind that these goals were developed within that matrix or a series of four quadrants of time and complexity. So there are some goals that were identified that are short-term, and you might remember that timeframe was one to three years, and those were then divided into complex and routine goals. So those are the items I would assume staff would start to tackle first, and then there's a series of long-term goals that you developed, and those were in a window of about three to eight years. But some long-term goals may require some upfront work in the next year or two to help get them started. So again, this all provides direction to staff, and then staff is going to work on developing an action planning instrument and technique with me that they'll be able to use going forward and then be able to report back to the board. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the board, that was the summary comments I wanted to offer this evening.
I have some questions.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, hi.
If you had a question on how to proceed with your, you know, rankings and scorings and that, was there a contact person that you had?
Yes, those contacts, we generally had questions addressed either to us or through staff.
If you had a question on how to proceed with your things, who was your contact person?
If I had a question...
If you were wondering how to score something, how to rank something, if a question didn't make sense?
Oh.
Did you have a contact person that you talked to in the village?
Yes, we generally would work through the manager's office, because that's where our conduit was to share information back and forth.
Did you have any questions while you were conducting your study?
Well, when we came down to the end of the results, we shared drafts of our rankings. We shared results of the draft summarizations and yes.
Don't say "we." Can you please use names? Who shared? Who shared? You and the manager, you and who?
I think at the very last part of the process, I had gone on, I've left Sickich and I've gone to Northern Illinois University, so we were using remaining staff at Sickich that were working on the ranking process.
If you had a question about something that came from the study and you didn't know how to deal with it, who would you ask? A name. A person, not a staff. A name. Who would you ask?
Stephen and I dealt with Greg as the main staff contact.
I'm asking him. I'm not asking you. Thank you, though. Who did you ask?
It would either be Mr. Niemeyer or Mr. Tilton, who are main contacts.
Did you ever ask Mr. Niemeyer or Mr. Tilton questions about how to score certain answers that were given on a sheet?
Yes, I do believe that when we got some ranking sheets back, we had some questions on how some things were completed, and we addressed those questions with staff, and at that time, it was...
When you say "staff," don't say "staff." I'd ask you to please use names.
Well...
People, not staff.
It would have been either Mr. Tilton or Mr. Niemeyer, but I also have to say that some of that work was done by the staff at Sickich that remained on the project.
Did either Mr. Tilton or Mr. Niemeyer, when you had questions about how to score certain things, tell you they needed to get back to you? Or did they answer your questions immediately?
I honestly don't...
Do you recall receiving my answers to questions?
The staff at Sickich did receive the questionnaires, or if there wasn't a questionnaire returned, that information was shared with staff.
Do you recall receiving my answers to the questions, the questionnaire?
That I would have to check back with the staff that was working at Sickich that remained to do the ranking process.
So you didn't get my answers to the questionnaires? You never saw them?
I would have to check the file.
Did you see them? It's a simple question. Did you ever see my answers to the questionnaires?
Trustee, I am answering you the best I can. I was not at the firm at the time, and I would have to ask the staff at the firm that was receiving those correspondences.
So you'd have to ask them if you saw them?
Well, you know, Mike, I don't want to...
Hold on, if I'm asking him the question.
But let's not turn this into a cross-examination. This isn't the forum for that. If you've got questions about the conduct of the study, I get it, because I know I had to redo my questionnaire for instance, my ranking.
You were given the opportunity to. Nobody gave me the opportunity. They discounted my score without ever consulting me.
You never submitted your...
And that's beyond what staff ought to be doing.
Oh, you did?
I submitted it.
Oh, you did?
I submitted it twice, and apparently they didn't like the way that I did it, but rather than consulting me, they just decided to discount it. And I'm wondering who was that made that decision? Was it Sickich? Was it at the village? And wouldn't that be something that you ought to run by the trustee who filled it out and say, hey, we're not going to count your answers because they didn't fit the format?
Trustee Penito, I asked you several times to score them, and I know you did not feel comfortable scoring them.
I did score them.
No, you gave us basically verbal rankings on them. You didn't give us scoring.
I scored them.
That's not... We did not get scoring from you.
So you decided to discount it? It was your decision?
There was nothing to score... You can't put it in the rankings if there isn't any scoring.
So was your...
And so I told trustee, I told Greg to make sure and put basically your information in the report.
You told him to discount it?
No, actually, I told him to put the information in the report, which it is in the report.
I'd ask that we, now that I'm aware that it doesn't count, and I hadn't been aware otherwise, maybe that we revisit that whole thing, because quite now, I don't believe this study is valid, because some people are counting, some people aren't.
Well, I could certainly offer, if the ranking sheet is provided, we can certainly add those rankings to the process. It's a matter of averaging, and those averages will be adjusted based on the results of the ranking, and that's not a problem at all.
How many were there, Greg? How many sheets were scored in this process?
All of the board members except one, and that's in the detail in the back of the report.
Okay. Thank you.
And as far as you know, you don't remember who you consulted with to make that decision?
Yes, I'm just going to repeat myself. Our conduit is either with Mr. Niemeyer or Mr. Tilton, also helped us in various parts of the study. So those are our primary contacts, and we rely on staff, not only in Tinley but in other communities, to forward ranking sheets to us for the tallying, rather than, you know, going directly to members of the board or staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Just one of the things. Basically, I think as Greg alluded to, so the final report, this is actually, and this is a very good report, and I want to thank everybody for their involvement with this, because I think this is important for several reasons. One is it gives us kind of a long-term tool on which to focus our priorities, rather than just kind of focusing on an annual budget-by-budget thing. We're going to, this will be something that, once it's completed, we'll be actually looking at and reviewing periodically. We'll put this on our website, and it'll actually be an important part of our budget process. It'll be something that, when we go into the budget, this will help give us some direction and priorities for the budget. Obviously, documents like this, priorities change, and so I would expect every year we would look at it, we would make adjustments based on new priorities, but this is a very important document. I think it's good for, not only give us guidance on priorities, it will help staff in terms of performance evaluations for employees, it'll give guidance on what employees' priorities. So just want to thank everybody for their efforts, and really, all the focus groups, residents who participated in the survey. A lot of that information went into the whole strategic plan, so thank you for everyone.
And I'd like to comment as well. Dave, if you're going to discount my participation in the future, tell me first.
I did not discount it. I asked you several times, and you told me the best you could do was give me the non-numerical report.
And you told me that it wouldn't be counted, and you were going to make that decision? Did you tell me that?
How could I count it when you didn't do a numerical ranking? We put it in the report.
I asked you a question. Did you tell me that it wouldn't count if I didn't do it numerically? You didn't. Isn't that right?
No, I told you basically the only ones that were going to count were ones that were scored. We can't score... How can you put in...
Can I suggest that we take care of this after the meeting, please?
Yes, agreed.
Thanks.
Okay. Greg, I just want to echo. We thank everybody that participated and helped in the process, and if you would like to make a revision or add that final ranking sheet, that's something we easily can do. So I will wait to hear from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I know that a lot of the items that had been listed as short-term goals actually had been included in the budget that commenced in May, so I think that shows that there certainly was relevance, and we appreciate that. Item number six, consider appointments for the following commission vacancies. This would be to appoint Environmental Enhancement Commission members Barbara Moore and Carrie Ryanitis, and Sister Cities Commission, Mike Hiss as chair, George Rhodey, and Chris Roach as associate. May I have a concurring motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. This time I move to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-051, granting a variation in the required front yard setback for a fence for a certain property located at 17101 Overhill Avenue.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Paula, is there anything that you'd like to add to this discussion this evening?
Just that the positions are Juliana and Maria Sepola, and this would allow them to align with the adjacent properties. They want to put up a block iron and brick column fence. It does require a 27-foot 11-inch variation, but it allows the fence to be set back 12-foot inch from the property lines. It's a corner one.
Is this a corner property?
Yes, I believe, I think I drove by that one as well. This aligns with the neighbors.
It aligns with the owner, the property owner, to the east, right?
You can see that the three lines that you're requesting is aligned with the adjacent fences. This shows you where the fence would be, so it does not obstruct any vision trying to come in.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, are there any questions from the board? Anybody from the audience here to comment? This is up for adoption. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item seven on final for ordinance 051 on roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. This is eligible for adoption. I move to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-052, granting a special use permit to Juliana Grover of the train station for the purposes of operating a business involving recreational uses and operating between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. at 16902 Oak Park Avenue.
And we have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, Paula, if there's anything you'd like to add to this?
This requires a special use because it's similar to another special use, such as a fitness center, and also that they want to operate outside of the hours of 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. They want to operate the personal fitness center between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. They're looking to place some special use that would regulate any kind of noise issues emanating from the use. They're limited to three clients per trainer and up to a maximum of four trainers. There is a plant of easelment off the back that we've been working towards and getting all the alley easelments off of that, so they've agreed to that, and that they're going to plant two additional street trees. And it was unanimous approval at the CBA.
Thanks, Paula. I'd just like to add that it's encouraging to see more business continue to take over our Park Avenue area, and also wondering if they give any discounts to the village officials for fitness, because I know that I'm in desperate need, but welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? This item is on for adoption. Anybody from the public here to comment? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item eight on final for ordinance 052, roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I'd ask that we consider waiving first reading for item number nine this evening. Can I get a second?
I think we can just do it all this one, can't we, Pat?
Yeah, if you want to do one motion to consider it with waiver of first reading, that's fine.
Appreciate it. Thank you. This time I move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-053, granting a variation for a certain property located at 17100 Fox Grove Way for Russell Nelson.
With waiver of first reading.
With waiver of first reading, correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paula.
This allows for replacement of an existing fence that was permitted back in 2009, but no variations were given, and this was a prior owner. When Mr. Nelson purchased the property, he came in for an extension of the fence to connect to an existing fence at the same location and was given a permit, but again, no variation is granted on those fences, and just repair any marks to replace it.
Thanks, Paula. I'd just like to note for the board as well that this is, you know, something that I believe that our department's running into a little bit more often than not with these variations without any type of permits or any documentation that was done in the past. This is just, you know, basically to keep good government rolling in the right direction, keep proper bookkeeping. I know it's, maybe it's inconvenienced for the property owner, but at the end of the day, it's the benefit of the entire community. So I appreciate the, you know, the cooperation and certainly their patience during the time that we try to get everybody back on the same page.
Yeah, this one, yes. I drove by this property as well, and I think it's the right thing to do. This item is up for adoption. Does anybody from the board have any comment or questions? Anybody from the public here to comment or question? Let the record reflect there were none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item nine on final, ordinance 053, roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yes.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
This was on waiver of first reading.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, Trustee Penito.
Although I appreciate the hard work that the staff has done, especially Paula and her building department, I believe that this item is prematurely on the agenda. I believe it should have gone to the building committee, and the building committee should have recommended putting it on the agenda. At this point, that hasn't happened, so...
Is there another sponsor for this?
Yes, sir. Want to read it?
No, you'd basically just make a motion, and then we'll get a second, then you can read if that's...
I'd like to make the motion on the ordinance, item number 10.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian?
I'd like the board to consider ordinance number 2016-0-055, establishing a minimum regulations governing the design, construction, alteration, enlargement, equipment, repair, demolition, removal, conversion, use, and maintenance of all buildings and structures, providing for the issuance of permits, collection of fees, making of...
providing for the issuance of permits, collection of fees, making of inspections, providing penalties for the violation thereof for the Village of Tinley Park, Cookinwill County, Illinois.
Okay. Paula, maybe you'd like to go into some detail here. This is a fairly complex provision.
Yeah, just a few comments. The building code was last adopted in 2007. ICC Codes, International Code Council adopts new national standards every three years. So, back in 2007, the village adopted a 2006 version of the ICC codes. What is customary, and what is sort of the standard of the industry, what most villages do, is you adopt a national code, of which there are 13 different codes. There are building codes, commercial codes, energy codes, a whole plethora of codes. And what normally happens, because the code console vets these codes out, they have a panel and a council of professionals that look at these updates every three years, and it takes them three years to get to the next update. What typically happens in communities, the communities will adopt the national code, and then they'll look at it and they say, yes, this is good, but we want to be more strict on certain issues, and so there'll be amendments to those. And typically, what a community will do, they'll adopt these codes, and then they'll have a nice little table at the front of their ordinance that says, we adopt blah, 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 but we delete this, blah, 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 we amend it this way. And so, for the developing community, they can easily look at those codes, they're used to working with the 2012, 2006 code, and then they'll say, oh, Tinley Park doesn't want us to do this. Fairly simple process. For whatever reason, and I imagine there's probably Brad Bittenhausen, who knows all the history, there's probably some history on why Tinley Park has done that differently forever. They pretty much emulate what the city of Chicago does, where they wrote their own code. They have their own comprehensive code. Over the years, it has gradually kind of morphed into what the standard of the industry is, but not completely. So, you have a code, which is in all our documents, that says everything somebody has to do when they build in Tinley Park, and then it will reference to some things in the ICC code. So, I gave you that sort of overview, because I want you to understand, if you're not intimate with these kinds of things, that you understand how things are normally done. Back in 2013, in May of 2013, the prior building director started working on the 2012 code. It was 2013, he was working on the 2012 code. That's typical. For whatever reason, staff time, busyness, or whatever, and he was working with Dan Reardon at that time, who's very proficient in code and understanding, it didn't get quite done until this last May and April, that it started coming before the village board and building committee for review. It went to a first reading on April 19th, and I appreciate the correction, trustee Penito. It went to a first reading April 19th. I wish I could remember off the top of my head, but I assumed these responsibilities probably the week after this happened. So, now it was under my responsibility, and all of a sudden, I'm understanding that we're doing a code update. I've done them before in other communities, but I hadn't been involved in this process, so I started looking at it, and I was concerned, because I saw some inconsistencies in this code, that for whatever reason, when it was being reviewed, and they were doing it correctly, they were taking things out of the code that they thought maybe belonged in the zoning code, for example, but I found some things like that that were happening in this code, and if you had adopted it, there would have been some gaps where we were being left without code to enforce. Case in point, right now, in the building code, there are regulations regarding masonry. Everyone knows we require first-floor brick on our houses or complete masonry. That was taken out of the code that you were going to adopt back in April, because I believe staff at that time thought it was going to get adopted in the zoning code, but that was never brought forward in the zoning code. So, that would have left you without a code. So, I went to the village manager and said, I'm uncomfortable, since this is my responsibility now, adopting this, I would like some time to kind of go through it. So, there ensued going through it. So, from that point up until now, and I really have to commend the staff, Dan Reardon, Gene Bruno, Gene Lodi, and Mike Chambers spent a lot of time going line by line, because what my manager was saying, make sure that we're adopting, no errors. You know, the format is the format, it's not something... We went and got out a bid to try to change the format to the way that I thought it should be done. It was $40,000. And we would have been spending all that money on a code that was 2012, where we'll shortly be going forward with the 2015. So, my job from that point until now was to go through this thing line by line, and make sure that I could tell you all what you were adopting, because at that point, quite honestly, you had a first reading, and I suspect, as trustee Penito mentioned earlier, you didn't really know all that was being adopted in that, and you wanted to know what you were adopting. So, again, worked with staff, I'm very proud of the work they did, and we went through, and I can tell you, I feel, I hope I'm going to say absolutely 100% confident that there's no mistakes, because I've done enough code writing in my life, and Pat, I'm looking to you to say, you write code, and then you sort of work through it, and maybe you find a little mistake here or there, but I am confident that you are not adopting something in here that is something you're unaware of, or, you know, I'm certainly highlighting the things that you're changing. So, the importance of adopting this is that you need to remain, the village should remain current with technology. There are new building practices and new building systems that our 2006 code does not address. That's one reason. The other reason we need to look at this is our accreditation of the fire department. They need to stay within two editions of the ICC codes to maintain their accreditation. The third reason, the CRS ratings, which if you recall, I don't know how long ago, Dave, that was maybe three months ago, that we were reduced in our CRS ratings...
About a year ago.
Pardon?
About a year ago, yeah.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
A long ago. So, with the adoption of the 2012 code, and then we have other points that we can assemble, we can go back and apply for our Class 6 status that we had lost. So, those are kind of the reason why, you know, I've been working hard to try to get this back before you, because it's been a long time in the making, and would like to see it move forward. Without going through every line item in here, I've highlighted in this memo the main changes in this 2012 and the local amendments. For the most part, the local amendments have stayed the same as they were in 2006. There are not a lot of changes there. What I've done, though, is made sure that they stayed the same in this edition, and that they were in the right location. Sometimes they were not even in the right chapter. So, in respect to trustee Penito's concern about local amendments staying the same as back in 2006, I'm just going to throw a number out there, I would say 90, 95% of them are the same as they were in 2006. So, the 2012 code has changed, but that's the international code, and so I kept or updated the local amendments that we've all approved back in 2006. Probably the area that is the more significant change, because it's easy to read in the table, is in Chapter 3, and that is the table that tells you what type of construction you can do with certain uses. And I tried to lay it out in a colored table here, so you could compare what we're doing now with this update to what we had before, and then also compare it to the ICC standards. In no section are we less stringent than the ICC codes, with the exception of single-family detached housing. I'm looking to you, Dan, to make sure I express this correctly, because a lot of this has to do with the fire department. Yes, thank you. So, the changes for R1, which is hotel construction, the only change there is that we've gone from allowing a two-story building at 24,000 square feet for Type 3A to the same as the National Code allows, and that's allowing for four stories at 24,000 square feet can use Type 3A construction. The other is for multifamily units at the R2 use group, and I'm looking at this table in your code here, in your memo. What this, what this change allows is for Type 3, I'm sorry, did I, in hotel, did I say Type 3A, or did I say Type 5? I meant to say Type 5. Type 5. In hotel construction, we used to not provide or allow Type 5 construction. We now match the National Code for three stories at 12,000 square feet. I'm sorry if I misspoke. Is that understood? So, I made that clear. For hotel construction, we're matching the National Code. We did not allow Type 5 construction before. For multifamily structures, which are R2 use groups, we did not allow Type 3A before, and now we're matching the national standard at four stories or 24,000 square feet can have Type 3A construction. There are some other changes in each section, and I can answer any questions if you have them. I know the Section 7, I'd really like to defer to Dan Reardon, our interim fire chief, because they're a little more complex than I'm used to, if you wanted to make any comments on the substantive changes in that section.
Yeah, I would, I think the bottom line is, this whole process has taken some time because we're looking at construction concepts that the village has used for forty years. And so, as we try to look at how the codes work today, and what the codes allow for, and what technology is at our disposal that wasn't available back then, we have to look at it. I know these are some of the concepts that Paul's going to talk about, but to try to work in and look at those concepts that we used for many, many years, try to come up with a workable construction-type classification or construction philosophy, what we've done today, I think, is really, really puts us where we think we're very comfortable. As far as the fire department and fire prevention, there have been some changes, a lot of formatting changes. We had to jump to, we had to jump to code additions, and there have been some changes in regards to the code additions that we didn't face in 2006. The code now addresses fire safety in regards to solar installations, not only for commercial, but also for residential. And we had to take into consideration, when you look at how we fight fires, it's different. And when we got solar installations on a roof, that can adversely affect not only how we put fires out, but the people we depend on putting fires out. There are some things in regards to the fire sprinklers, that we, although we did not, we opted out of not doing single-family, we stayed pretty much consistent with our message of, you know, townhomes, commercial, and leaving that limit at about 3,000 square feet. So, anything larger than three, less than 3,000 square feet didn't require a sprinkler system. One thing that we didn't, and we are proposing, is that any commercial property is required to have a fire alarm system. And a fire alarm system reports to our dispatch center using our equipment. The goal there is to make sure we'll have a fully, we'll have now all of our properties commercial, and now fall under a life safety concept, I mean, everybody is afforded a totally warrant. So, those are some of the, those are some of the concepts that are out there. They are identified, they are summarized by section number, and they're also summarized in, I shouldn't say summarized, but the whole text in and of itself. And it's not much of a change. I said, how many significant changes do we make? Maybe less than a handful. But those are as a result of the code changing, and also reacting to that code change versus us going in and doing what we feel is making, creating a code section that didn't exist before.
Thanks, Dan, and thank you again for all your help on this. It's a big help.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, I appreciate all that everybody's done, and I appreciate everybody recognizing that it did need to be improved. And you properly note, I think, in my research, Chicago's the only place that still does it that way, which makes it really difficult to just say, okay, this is Orland Parks code, let's adopt it, make a change or do it. We do things, basically, uniquely. Ideally, it needs to be updated properly, and I'd like to thank everybody from the village that helped with it. I'd also like to thank Eduardo Manny, who spent two hours talking to me last night about working in the field, trying to understand these things, and how good codes could promote good businesses coming to town and, you know, wanting to do business here. You know, hopefully, going forward, we'll be able to fix it. My problem isn't with what you've done, my problem is that it's on the agenda for approval, and I got it on Friday night.
First reading, but we'll be glad to sit down and go line by line with you, if you like.
We've certainly got three weeks before this item would be up for adoption, so there's, there should be time for, if, you know, if public safety would like to jointly meet with the building and compliance committee, because there, obviously, there are a lot of related issues here, I think it might be a good idea to conduct that jointly, just to make sure that all reservations and policy changes are understood, and we get it as good as we can. With this, this would constitute first reading. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number 11, trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider a contract extension with Beverly Environmental for fiscal year 2017, parking lot and sidewalk snow removal.
Do we have a second?
So, move.
Thank you.
In 2015, the village at Tinley Park competitively bid out its parking lot and sidewalk snow removal. The proposed contract extension would be for snow removal for 25 parking lot and sidewalk locations covered by the contract agreement. The contract allows for the village, at its sole discretion, to extend the agreement up to two additional years. Beverly Environmental has provided the village with acceptable service levels during the fiscal year 2016 season. The service would be at the same rates as the previous year. As such, staff is recommending the village exercise its option to extend the agreement for the 2016 snow season. Funds for this contract are budgeted and available in the current fiscal year budget. This item was discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting held prior to this meeting.
Any other questions? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
11, contract extension for fiscal year 2017, on roll call, trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12, trustee Yonker.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like the board to consider awarding a contract for repairs and painting at Post 1 East Ground Storage Reservoir to Era Valdiva Contractors of Chicago.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Funds in amount of $850,000 were included in the current fiscal year for repairs and painting to Post 1 East Ground Storage Reservoir, which is on 167 Streets. Bids were received, and Era Valdiva was the lowest bid. Staff and village engineer reviewed the bids and found that the Era Valdiva was the lowest bid. They've also performed work for the village in the past and deemed to be satisfactory quality. This item was discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting held prior to this meeting.
This item is the low bid. Would the clerk please record the rest of the bids into the record, and at this time, call the roll.
Item 12, final, on contract, trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13, trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider awarding a contract to FH Passion for the Police Department firing range upgrade.
Do we have a second?
So, move.
Thank you.
The proposed project is for replacement of the primary components of the Police Department firing range. Key aspects of the project include replacement of the targeting system, remediation of lead and improvements for air filtration system. Project also includes all related facility repairs as necessary to complete the work. The proposed contract award was part of the state of Illinois' competitively bid job order contracting program. Funds for this project are included in the current fiscal year budget. This item was discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting held July 16, 2016.
Anybody from the board have any questions on this item? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 13, Police Department Firing Range Upgrade. Item 13, Police Department Firing Range Upgrade. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14, Trustee Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to consider authorizing the renewal of the village's health and dental insurance policy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This action would authorize the renewal of the village's health and dental insurance contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Illinois effective October 1, 2016. The proposed renewal by Blue Cross Blue Shield reflects an increase of $206,863.32 or 4.5% change for health insurance. The dental insurance renewal reflects an increase of $11,584 or 4.1% change. The village included an estimated 15% increase in the current budget for the anticipated health dental insurance renewal and accordingly. The renewal is favorable to the budget, and this item was discussed at the Budget Audit and Administration Committee meeting held prior to the Village Board meeting and recommended for approval. So I'd like to consider authorizing the renewal of the village's health dental insurance policy with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I unfortunately had to step out of the committee meeting prior. Who shopped this out for the village?
The Hallsborough Insurance Broker did.
And that's one company that we've used for, for a number of years?
Oh, no. No, we actually, we actually went out for a new broker, was it two years ago? Yeah. So they're a fairly, fairly new firm.
And how many different, how many different companies came back with rates?
The only one was Blue Cross.
Only one?
Yeah.
And how many, how many years are we going to go with that, with this current broker?
Well, I mean, that is up to the board. I mean, if we've typically with a broker, it's usually several years just to get them used to the village, and they've only been with us a couple of years, but that's certainly something we can discuss at a future budget and admin meeting.
I understand it might be favorable, and I understand we budgeted for it, but is it, is it alarming at all that we've only received one, one program back for this village?
Well, I will tell you, based on my experience, it's, it's not uncommon that I, in some of my past communities, Blue Cross is often the only, the only bidder. Obviously, you know, we're, as we discussed in committee, we're making some changes to the program that's going to reduce some of the costs for the village and make it more in line with the municipal market, but I'm not so sure. I guess bottom line is another broker would necessarily be able to get another insurance. Blue Cross very much-
How many years have we had Blue Cross as our provider?
I don't know. Brad, you want to-
That's a long, long time.
Long history, right?
Long time there, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know, unless-
And just curiously, the broker that we had prior to the current one, did they have any other companies they brought to the table, or was it just Blue Cross as well?
I think that very-
There were other, other insurance companies brought to the table. However, there are aspects of this that are tied to our collective bargaining agreements that restricted our ability to implement those other policies.
Good point.
So we couldn't have multiple policies, just based off of that, what you just said? Would it benefit us to have separate policies for the non-collective employees compared to the collective employees?
The way they rate it is typically you're going to get your best rate if you, if you have a policy for, for all your employees. And so, yeah, one of the challenges is, without getting into all the machinations of the union contracts, is you do have to bargain any substantial changes, especially with police, and that is one of the things we're working on right now.
I apologize if this is all repetitive.
No, it's all right.
Like I said, I wasn't, I had to step out of the meeting. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's fine with the fact that, you know, we're keeping it under our budgeted item for the year, but I would consider, I would, I would like this board to consider, my colleagues, I think it's important that we try to get as many, you know, programs or companies to the table as possible, just to, you know, just for the bottom line, maybe our employees would like a different provider. You don't know that. I don't know. Blue Cross, don't get me wrong, I have Blue Cross.
Yeah.
I think it's the best, but I just think that it might be to the advantage of the employees as well as the residents to see some additional companies, but obviously, maybe for this year, that's not something we need to discuss, but I know a year and a half ago, we discussed that, and it's just back on us already. It's just-
Yeah. Well, and again, they did, they do search, search for additional proposals, but it's, it's not uncommon that Blue Cross is kind of the king, and they, they can do a lot of the plans that other-
What was our rate increase last year?
What was the increase last year?
Was it, was it, you know, comparable, or?
It was minimal. I think it was actually less than-
Was it less than what we currently have?
Yeah. It made, I think there have been a couple of years we've had flat.
And we do have multiple plans within Blue Cross, obviously, you know, there's HMO people, yeah, so.
The insurance business is getting to be a tougher and tougher business. You know, Etna just pulled out of some of the government plans, and they're, they're getting more and more picky about the risk that they take, and this is, you know, once again, subject to some review and revisions, because the manager is, is asking this board to take a look at some other options here that would save money for both the employees as well as the village, but with, of course, a higher risk of, you know, deductibles and that sort of thing. So we'll get into that shortly, sure, because I know they want to try to, we're actually reviewing that to be effective Jan 1, so.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question based on Commissioner Vandenberg's comments. Has anyone contacted, like a humaner or anybody else to see why they're not submitting bids?
The broker did reach out to other insurance companies. I'd be glad to get the board the list of-
Yeah, there's documentation for why the declines are usually in there as well.
Maybe their specs are too specific.
Because you, there's full visibility. Well, you've got to give full visibility, not only of your experience, but the premiums that the competition is charging you, so it's a, it's, it's not as competitive as I think most of us would like to see it, and that's, that's part of the problem. But we can, I think we get you that detail. If no other questions, Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item 14, roll call on renewal of the village's health dental insurance. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
No.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15, Trustee Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to consider entering into a contract with GovQA, a division of WebQA, for a FOIA management system.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
On July 22, 2016, the village issued a request for qualification, RFQ, for a FOIA management system. Eight vendors downloaded the RFQ from the village website, and on August 5, the village received one RFQ from WebQA of Woodbridge, Illinois. After reviewing, staff contacted three municipalities in the Chicagoland area and had favorable comments toward the system and company. The system will improve transparency for the public with accessibility through the village website, where they can see, or they can make requests, they can check the status of their request, view the requests made by others, and view responsible, responsive documents. The system will improve staff efficiency by incorporating its data, improving response time, and providing accountability by reporting all areas of activity. The total contract cost is $9,840 per year with a one-time implementation fee of $2,850. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, held on August 9, and at the Budget Audit and Administrative Committee meeting held prior to this meeting. So if this contract is recommended for approval at the Budget and Audit Administration Committee meeting, then we'll consider entering into a contract for a FOIA management system with GovQA and an amount not to exceed $12,690.
Anybody on the board have any questions about this one? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk?
Item 15, final contract with GovQA. On roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
Just before I vote, I'm going to vote no, but basically, months ago, I'd asked that an audit be conducted into what information is within the village and how it can be disseminated. As part of this whole transparency thing, I talked to the clerk about potentially putting everything that wasn't something that had to be kept secret on the internet in a searchable form to potentially save on FOIA costs and to have citizens advised of everything that was going on, and be able to find anything they needed to make good decisions. Thus far, I still don't know what information the village has. It seems like you could almost start out with a simple questionnaire to the employees and ask them what forms they generate, what forms they get, and disseminate that before going on to the next step. I vote no.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 16, comments from the board. My day started at the convention center with Chief Newbauer and many other police chiefs. You should all feel comfortable. We've probably got more police in our town right now than we ever do. This is a, which, I know I was there last year for the opening event, was, this is a, this is a Chiefs of Police and private security partnership conference, and I think that it, very well attended, and once again, another, another economic impact generator here, and we're glad to have the chiefs with us. Anybody else from the board have any comments or questions? We've got, we had another great cruise night, weather was cooperated. That's a good thing. Anybody else from the board? Anybody from the public here to comment? Step on up. Mr. Paws.
We're actually going to raise this a little. Thanks, thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Seaman. First of all, public service announcement. April 4, 2017, there's an election. Make sure you're registered to vote. Okay, now I got that out of the way. Just to follow up on Treasurer Benhausen's TIF presentation, which was very good, the one thing that I had asked about was an example of how something that's up for TIF, you know, money consideration is written down. I found one back in February 15 of 2011 for the North Street project, and to the village's credit, and actually, at the time you were trustee, Seaman, you introduced it, and it does in fact say that, you know, it's for TIF, it says which TIF district, and that there's funds available. And just to prove it wasn't a fluke, I found it when I was looking up what we paid for sickage for this meeting. It actually happened at the same meeting, another North Street development. And again, it was for purposes of demolition, $15,500 for a property there, but it does say that it's TIF, and it's Main Street South, and that there's money available. So I wanted to commend the village, because you know me, I like to give credit where credit is due, that you guys do in fact put it in there, in the agenda, so if someone who's on TIF watch wanted to know if TIF funds are being expended, they'll see, like, okay, there's TIF there, and, you know, I may want to bring this up to public comment, or if it's going to be adopted. So kudos to yourself and Mr. Benhausen, and again, Trustee Suggs, bringing these questions up. Thank you. Just kind of segueing now off that, again, going back to how I kind of came up with the second one, you know, I know I brought up the whole thing with consultants before, but here we go again with sickage, and I want to thank Trustee Panito, that was fiery and awesome. Thank you. I just loved your commentary on that, and thanks for putting your two cents, and that was cool. So I wanted to take the opportunity for that, but at the same meeting, you know, this was a busy board meeting apparently back then, there was also a consultant for the TIF project for Panduit. Now, so we actually had two consultancies considered at the same meeting, you know, with a common theme here. Then, of course, we have the consultancy going on with the Brandy campaign, which now, almost at this point, I'm thinking we should rebrand Tinley Park Consultant Phil. I mean, I don't know, it's just, at some point, I almost want to think, especially since this was our fifth district, did we really even need a consultant for that? You know, it, it's frustrating. It's not like we're, you know, a skeleton staff board, I mean, or village, you know. I mean, it almost seems like to me, we should go to consultants as the last resort. Seems like we're doing as first result, so, I mean, first resort, so in any case, you know, just bringing up this whole consultancy thing again, just seems like we have so many consultants. Just putting my two cents, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I spoke once before, Mike Stuckley.
Yes.
I used to live in Bear Brothers Subdivision. My parents still reside there, and any updates on that traffic study?
Well, I'll defer to the police chief on that one.
That's the next public safety plan.
Okay. September 6. September 6, yeah.
Okay, what is it actually involved? Is there going to be, is that for maybe a possible stoplight on Harlem Avenue, or?
No, no, it was for a stop sign where there was a crash on, I'm not sure what the streets were, they were over there, and so that was a new study, and then all the other, the requests was previous studies have done it, but it's all side street stuff.
Okay, okay, thanks. I have another thing. May I refer to this real quick? I live in a condo complex on 108 Third Oak Park Avenue, where the Citizen at Tinley Park, no Buckeye banners were mounted. I got a call from my management company and asked me, can you take, can you take them down? I told them, I'm no longer a member of Citizen at Tinley Park, I can pass them out as a delong. So the message went, got passed to the leadership. The leadership decided to send me a message back saying, no, they're not going to take them down, you take them down. Well, I put a little pressure on them, they decided to take them down, and when they took them down, the two appointees, Michael Fitzgerald and Ken Shaw, went on the attack on Facebook. Attacking my association. Excuse me, I have the mic.
Go ahead.
Attacking my association for not caring about, not having Buck, they, they basically says that we don't care if Buckeye builds or not. Then Fitzgerald went on a rant, called me an a-hole, I'm going to censor that, and told me to eat excrement, I'll censor that also. So these are the appointed officials, again, that go on the attack on a cyber harassing. So I just wanted to point that out. This is where we're at with these two. They're also mentioned, and there's also mentioned in the lawsuit. That is not hearsay.
Okay, appreciate your comment.
So I just want to say that's where we're at, and also, my condo association, we do care, but it was time for the banners to be taken down. Some people want to sell, and with those banners up, nobody might not really want to move in when, when they see this. But they could not understand that. They didn't want to understand that. It was like, we don't care, so I just want to get that out there.
Okay.
One more thing, we got another guy on the weekends that stands waving the cars with a sign that says, "Pack your bags." If you're driving your car down that road in Tinley Park, and you see, you see a sign that says, "Pack your bags," you're probably wondering, what does this guy mean? He doesn't want us in this town?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stuckley.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chris, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Benhausen, I got a quick question for you. Now, I've been pretty curious, especially in the public service side, especially with our, and this is for Chief Newbauer, maybe you can add it too. You know, we've got our police in town, and what I'm kind of, it's concerning, is that, you know, I see the pensioned, you got quite a bit of unfunded pension liability going on. It states around 20, almost $24 million. What I don't understand is, is that, you know, we go around, the village has gone around doing all these TIFs, you know, we got the most TIFs in probably the Chicagoland area. We have five, while Orland and Oakland, lucky they got one apiece. We're spending all this money on all these different, all these different firms trying to figure things out in town, when the people who are taking care of us, it's at a 71% taking care of us, it's at a 71% rate that their pension's funded. Now, back in April of 2008, the pension was funded around 75%. With unfunded liability at $11.7 million, how does it jump from $11.7 million to almost $24 million within, what, seven years? Also, Chief, I got a question for you. How is our... How's the staffing for the cops? Are we doing good? Do we have enough? Are we like at our peak? Do we have enough police out there?
Well, you know, we're staffed, so we have the street staff and detectives are staffed.
Do we... Is there any need to... Are we at full staff level, though?
No, we're...
No?
We have retirements and we're replacing, making replacements.
Okay. Now, one thing I have a quick question on, and this goes to trustee Maher. You have... We have client Thorpe and Jenkins since about April of this year. There's been a lot of money being spent with having to deal with Trace Ambulance. I'm kind of curious. There's been thousands and thousands of dollars, and I was in here at the last meeting where something got passed with Trace Ambulance for $147,500 on a settlement agreement. What is all that have to do? Does that have anything to do with what Chris Vandenberg was stating back when you guys had these contract conflicts with the $495,000 he said the village owed?
Yeah, it was a settlement of that lawsuit.
And another thing, you know, it was very nice to see Mrs. B... I think it was her name, Kathy Baker. She was up here and she got, you know, she got applauded for, you know, helping a fellow resident. I'm all for that. The one thing I don't understand, I'm gonna kind of go to you with this, trustee Maher, is, you know, when we go and we bring in anybody to do our EMS, what I don't have an understanding is, for a long period of time, that they've been... We've either had trace or we've had with the current contractor, you know, there's been a lot of lives saved too, and they've done a lot of good as well. How come I've never seen anybody up here, especially within, since this current contractor been here, and even with some of Trace, I've never seen anybody up here and congratulated in front of all the people of Timly Park on...
We have... They have done that.
Thank you, Chris. That's your time, but I think we can respond to that because there was actually one delivery that was made, I think, was it mentioned at the last meeting? Pat? It was made not too long ago where there was...
Yeah, we just actually got... Received it last week, so...
Yeah, so this was recognition for somebody that delivered.
Telecommunical Christmas party, you did some as well?
Correct.
So we try, Chris, we try. Mr. Manny?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I just wanna comment on the code update. I'm just concerned that, I think, several council meetings ago, I think Mr. Panito, trustee Panito, asked, you know, he wanted to see documentation on how these codes were passed back in 2007. And I think Paula, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you mentioned that you guys exhausted your efforts and you couldn't find any... Anything to back up why the codes were changed, certain sections, you know? And to me, that was kind of like mind-boggling, you know? I don't understand why there isn't documentation indicating the logic of why it should have been changed, you know, because, you know, because of this or that. And then you mentioned also that this code update was dropped in your lap. You know, now it became your duty to get this code going, and we have to update it, and there was this sense of haste, you know, because of accreditation from IAS, which is a subgroup of the ICC code, and you just mentioned the CRS. So, you know, I researched the IAS accreditation, and I think that's something that, you know, in my opinion, as an architect for 19 years, you know, that could wait. Let's correct our codes, it could be user-friendly, you know, make things buildable that's cost-effective. Because I think right now our code is expensive to build, you know, so why would one... A person want to come here and build something if it's gonna cost, you know, a premium, you know? And then you just mentioned that we lost our CRS rating, so we're level six, you know, we want to obviously maybe bump it up. So what does... Does that require the code to be updated? I know I emailed you before, like, indicating, like, you know, what are the entities that are requiring our code to be updated, and again, you know, in a hastily fashion, and that's how I feel it is. If you could let me know, because I just wanted to just dig into that to see, you know, what exactly are these entities requesting, you know, what parts of the code to be changed? And earlier you mentioned that, you know, the code men, you guys have been trying to change it, update it since 2013, and that's, you know, three years. So does it really take that long to look at line item by line item? I think I would like to see is that if it could be compared, what we have now, what it could be like 2000... You know, you want to update it to 2012, which is great, you know? I work with many municipalities throughout the state, they use 2003, 2006, 2009, 15. Currently, I have a project in La Grange, they use Boca in 1996, and it works for them, you know? So, you know, their... That code's not complex, their amendments, they're few and minimum, but obviously all municipalities make amendments so they could tweak, you know, to make it fit their city, village, what have you, to make their growth prosper and make their villages, you know, better. You know, I think right now our... Excuse me. Our code is hindering, and then now, if our code is hindering construction and growth, and then we want to add these updates to it, you know, are we... Are these updates, are we already looking at them and looking at all the hindrances and try to alleviate that, you know, make it better? I know the construction five, you know, for like hotel use was currently in our code, you know, you can't build a hotel using construction five, which is, you know, wood studs, drywall. But I want to know the logic, why it was changed to that? Because the...
Mr. Manny, I'd hope you're at the end of your four minutes, but we'd like you to please join us, because as trustee Panito said, there will be a committee meeting, hopefully with public safety, and we can, you know, receive that input there. Certainly, some of the questions you had, Paula can follow up with you before this evening's over. So we thank you.
Well, that is... That's what I would like as a resident, you know, I want... I like to see our village go forward.
Absolutely.
And I've been, you know...
We thank you.
That's what I want to do. So, you know, again, you know, I guess this update, you know, I don't think it should. Let's look at...
Well, there's three weeks to give it a good scrutiny, so we hope that that can be accomplished in that timeframe. Thank you, sir. You're welcome to be part of it.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed trustees, our village, as you know, has invested a considerable amount of money in a branding campaign. Many of our residents are excited and have high hopes of seeing the results of the branding investment be productive results, helping Timly Park put out a positive image of being a great place to visit. The residents want Timly Park to be thought of as a polite, tolerant, and welcoming destination. I have also heard that the board is working on ethics ordinance. I'm also fairly confident, Mr. Mayor, that you prefer to operate in a continuous improvement process mode, and that you're always improving your expectations of how commissioners should behave when representing our village. As you know, Mr. Mayor, we live in exciting times. Thirty years ago, mayors, they never had to worry about what their commissioners are saying in social media. Mayors thirty years ago didn't have to be concerned about commissioners displaying vulgar discourse laced with profanities and disrespecting a fellow resident or residents. Recently, after having witnessed an ugly discussion in a Timly Park social media group, I did some research on cyberbullying, cyber harassment, and cyber stalking. I regret to inform you, Mr. Mayor, and indeed, perhaps you are already aware, Mr. Mayor, that two Timly Park commissioners have been practicing cyber harassment in our village, commissioners sadly whom you appointed, Mr. Mayor. I would hope you agree with me, Mr. Mayor, that Timly Park residents don't want to see Timly Park commissioners harassing minorities in social media. I would hope you agree with me, Mr. Mayor, that Timly Park residents don't want to see Timly Park commissioners harassing Timly Park residents in social media. Would the village board care to confirm that they care about our village's brand by reprimanding commissioners who have behaved negatively and participated in cyberbullying or social media ugliness? Would the board like to otherwise clarify what the village's official policy is for commissioners who reflect poorly on our government when they put out such negative communications or share with the public today what our expectations are for commissioners who participate in the social media, and if social media is also included in the ethics ordinance? If the village board thinks that it is okay for Timly Park commissioners to harass minorities and residents in social media, where do minorities and residents go to voice their concerns, Mayor? Do you suggest Lisa Madigan's office, the Department of Justice? I had heard that the village board was going to cooperate with the Department of Justice and help them with their investigation. What are the policies of the board regarding cyber harassment of minorities and residents, Mr. Mayor and village board? Thank you, and I leave you with a copy of my concerns here.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Everhard.
Start out, it's probably gonna be like beating a dead horse, but I just want to talk about this four-minute time limit. You know, you gentlemen of the board put a lot of contract issues, you put a lot of ordinance issues, you don't let the public comment on contract issues, so then we come up here in four minutes, and I'm seeing everybody's getting cut off, so I need to start talking a little bit faster. I think you may want to consider that at some point, you are not really gonna be having a proper, open meeting when there's multiple issues and people are addressing those issues directly on point. You, Mr. Mayor, had a conversation or had conversations with former mayor about town hall meetings, a little less rigid. You tried one of those, I believe, at a board meeting. I would suggest that you really consider that again, because I think all these folks out here, and a lot of folks who stay home, would rather sit down and be able to have a more lengthy discourse. A comment was brought up about unfunded police pension, and I gotta start harping on this again. In the mid-1990s, you were a trustee, the clerk was a trustee, and I believe Maher, Mr. Maher was a trustee still at the time. You passed a resolution that graduated contributions to police pensions up to a level of 100%, and you have never lived up to it. And that's why people have to come in here and complain. But my real point is a question for trustee Youngker. This involves the contract for the snow removal that was approved. There's 25 parking lots that are apparently covered by that contract, and I'm wondering if you recall the amount that is being earmarked for the snow removal at the First Methodist Church on 173rd Place.
I don't know the exact amount. We could... Is it broken down? Could we get that for him?
We could get it.
Okay.
But we as taxpayers pay for the snow plowing, and that is plowed just like any street and the commuter parking lot and anywhere else. The reason why I bring this up is because of Treasurer Bentonhausen's kind of comment that was troubling a few board meetings ago, when he talked about the permit parking is at capacity. So when it's at capacity, I guess we need to rent the Methodist Church parking lot. But not only do we pay rent at $1,200 a month, which was raised 50% in September of 2014, from 800 to 1,200, the village pays for the insurance and indemnifies the church, they pay for the striping of the parking lot, they pay for all the lighting repair, and they're responsible for sewer repair. The only thing the church pays is to fill some of the potholes. So I drove around yesterday. I went to the lot that a lot of people don't really know that is permit parking over by subway. Fifty-two empty parking spots in the subway lot, not one car had a village parking permit on there. I know people who were asked if they wanted parking permits in there, and they denied them, saying, "That's too far to walk." The Hickory Street Lot, daily pay, 33 empty parking spots. The South Parking Lots at Oak Park Avenue had a total of 53 empty parking spaces, and the North Lot, 145. And I realize you oversell, and I realize not everybody parks every day. I'm one of those people. But as I go in and out of those lots, there's a consistency to the people that are there. So on Monday, yesterday, there were 283 empty and available parking spaces for commuter parking. Does anybody have a guess on how many people were parked at the church lot?
Zero.
Six. So I find it very difficult for the board to sit back and justify six parking permits. And when I've checked in the past, it has never been more than 10, when there's 283 empty parking spaces. So we as taxpayers pay $14,400 a year in rent, we pay for the insurance, we indemnify the church, we pay for the sewer and sewer repair, we pay for all the lighting for six people to park there. So a little bit of further investigation. Who is a member of the congregation? Any member of the staff want to admit being a member of the congregation? Nobody wants to admit it. I know for a fact that a former trustee is a member of the congregation, and I would guess his brother may be a member of the congregation. I think people should be outraged at the fact that we as taxpayers pay all that money for six parking spots, so it looks like there's some kind of special deal, so when the congregants go to church on Sunday, their parking lot is plowed. Wouldn't you like to go to St. George's and make sure that everything is plowed? Wouldn't everybody else on the board like to go to church and make sure that their parking lot is plowed? But you put the burden on these people for what is probably a special deal for some people in the village.
Thank you, sir. Just a slight point of clarification. The general taxpayer does not pay to maintain commuter parking lots. That is a separate enterprise fund, and those bills are paid for the people that park there, just for the record. Mr. Glotz, your ask.
Trustee Panito, you mentioned that you guys don't find out until Friday what's on the agenda, correct?
This packet I got Friday night.
Okay. Is that way it is for every meeting?
More often than not, we get a document dump on a Friday night.
Okay, so same time we do. So you don't get any advance notice to look at it or know other, like we do?
And this one I was particularly concerned about, because it's a committee that I supposedly had, and there's an item on the agenda that I didn't say put it on the agenda for a vote.
Okay. Thanks.
And I find it bothersome.
I would figure you guys would have an advance notice. Mr. Bentonhausen, you mentioned about the insurance, that it's tied to the aspects of the bargaining unit? How is it tied to the bargaining unit?
Would bargaining units have to approve any changes to the insurance, health, insurance premium offerings?
So the staff is through the union insurance?
I'm sorry?
So the staff is through the union insurance?
There's a policy for the... There's an insurance policy that is for all employees of the village, but the union contract provides that they have the right to approve the contract.
So your insurance goes through the union insurance? Is that what you're saying?
No.
So what is the bargaining unit?
It's our own policy, but basically, if there's substantial changes that we make to the policy, we have to negotiate with the police.
How much is it per person for the insurance per month?
Well, I don't know, it depends on...
For family, not for a single individual, say for someone that has a family.
Well, it depends on what's planned, HMO, PPO, I mean, I...
There's five different...
Yeah.
There's five different plan offerings.
I can get to that, yeah.
Roughly, what do you... Do you have any idea, Brad, what it costs?
I don't have those information. I don't have that information on that.
Okay. For next meeting?
Yep, we can email it to you.
That'd be great. That'd even be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because everyone, all the staff, if you wanted to, if you want to stay with Blue Cross, which is the cream of the crop, we don't have to have Blue Cross, but if we choose to do so, you can, since we're signatory to 150, you can have the same exact insurance that the employees have and go through them as non-union bargaining unit members. And a single person would be $771 per month, which would be $9,200 per year. If you have a family, it's $1,890 per month through local 150, which would only cost $22,000 per year.
Thank you.
But you can't just have one. You all have to agree to get in it or out of it.
Thank you, sir. Most appreciated. Good evening.
Got a question. I think most of us are kind of beat after the regular board meeting, because it's pretty low. because it's pretty lengthy. And then you guys usually have an executive session, take care of-
Not tonight.
Other things. But, I'm just wondering, last, the last meeting, you guys had an executive session, right? And it ran till, like, ten o'clock or so, pretty late?
I don't remember.
Roughly, I mean, just ballpark.
I'm, I'm the clerk, he's the timekeeper.
Ten o'clock, I mean, it was like, all right, was everybody in attendance, as far as trustees and everybody, or was somebody excused from that?
I don't recall, I don't have the clerk's keeper-
Well, somebody, I mean, you guys know who's there, right?
We have those records, they're not at fingertips. We can let you know, though, right away.
Okay, I was just curious, because I thought, a friend of mine's a musician, he was playing at Bailey's, Joe Horzakel, and I wanted to go up there and kind of support him, and, no, I seen Trustee Suggs at the bar, I think it was about nine fifteen, and I was like, wow, the meeting must have got over early. I was just wondering, was he in attendance at the executive session, or was he excused for, you know, some official business, maybe to check out noise complaints? And I know you guys do that occasionally, you know, Durbin's, check it out, and this would be close to, you know, nighttime, when there's probably a problem with noise. Was that, was that the case, was he on official business?
Like I say, I don't even have the record at my hand, fingertips.
All right, so you don't know who was there, I mean, you can't, it was the last meeting, I mean, don't you know who was there? Because it was kind of like, brought up during that meeting, you know, attendance, and that, and then, Trustee Suggs, you know, chose to sort of confront me in a vestibule afterwards, and I thought, when Pat Ray came out and said, come on, Kevin, we got an executive session, I thought he was going into the session, but maybe he got excused, you know, for some other, you know, reason to leave, something just curious, you know. I was kind of surprised, I thought your meeting got over like, really early or something, you know, you called it a night, and he went over to, you know. All right, just thought I'd mention-
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions, or comments for the board? Seeing as there are none, motion to adjourn?
So long.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us.